We'd like to welcome you to our April 23rd, 2020 virtual meeting of the City Council. We hope you and your families are staying safe and healthy. We are continuing to experience unprecedented and challenging times. The coronavirus pandemic has imposed unique changes and interruptions to our normal daily lives. However, we know the St. Cloud community is strong and we will get through this. As Mayor, I want to ensure you that although operations at City Hall have been limited and restricted, the City of St. Cloud continues to serve our residents. Our first responders, water and waste, water operators, sanitation collection employees, building inspectors, and other city team members are faithfully serving the citizens of our city. We cannot thank them enough for their service and dedication. Tonight's council meeting is the second meeting we are conducting using communications media technology as authorized by Executive Order of the Governor during this current pandemic. We appreciate your patience and assure you that our City Council remains committed to providing the public affair and reasonable opportunity to participate in council meetings. We sincerely appreciate your continued understanding as we work through this temporary manner of conducting meetings. To tonight's meeting participants, as the Presiding Officer, I request the following. One, each council member or designated staff member requests that they be recognized by me before speaking. I will do my best to quickly recognize and call upon you. All participants should use the mute function and only unmute yourselves when you seek to be recognized to speak and while you are speaking. Please remember that this meeting is being broadcast to the public and therefore we request that you eliminate any background distractions you may have at your location. Prior to the council taking final action on any agenda item, applicants or members of the public who are present in the public access area will be recognized to address the council. Applicants and members of the public who have pre-registered to address the specific agenda item through communications media technology will be recognized to address the council. And email or written statements that have been timely submitted will be read into the record. The normal rules I stated earlier regarding public comments still apply. Thank you for your cooperation and efforts to ensure this council meeting is conducted in the best interest of the City of St. Cloud. With that, I call this meeting to order. Our invocation will be given by Bishop Sam Haught from Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter-day Saints. I ask that we all please stand and then we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. It's good to have you here, Sam.
Thank you. Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before thee during this unique time. We're grateful for the many blessings that we have, for our freedoms, for our country, and for all those who serve us to keep us safe and healthy. We're so grateful for the healthcare professionals, the first responders, and those that are in harm's way of this virus. We're thankful for the beautiful weather we have this time of year. We're thankful for our community and for our families and friends. We ask you this time to please bless the many individuals who are affected by this virus, both financially and in regards to their health. We ask to bless those that are sick, that they will recover quickly. And we ask thee to continue to bless us, that we will be protected and shielded from this virus, that our community will recover quickly, and that our friends and family and loved ones will remain safe and healthy during this crisis. We ask a special blessing on the healthcare professionals, our military, and the first responders who are dealing with this pandemic, that they will be protected and they'll be blessed for their efforts. We ask you to bless our youth and the individuals who are struggling through this time mentally, emotionally, and financially, that they will be able to recover quickly and that we will all be stronger as a result of this. We love thee and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Could you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll have our roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
There are no presentations this evening. So that brings us to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the City Council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form that will be provided for the Presiding Officer prior to or soon as practical after the person addresses the council or according to the rules that we stated earlier. Is there anyone in the council chambers who is here to speak to the forum? Madam Clerk?
There is no one present at this time. However, we did have a request sent in virtually and I can, it's to be read into the record.
Okay, if you'll share that just soon.
From Shawn Hindle, 8 Broadway, Suite 104, Kissimmee, Florida. "The City and Leadership, I want to personally thank the City Council manager and staff for their efforts, sacrifices, direction, and leadership during the tragic time in our history. The proactive steps the mayor and council have taken to provide a safe environment and protections from the pandemic are very much appreciated. I have witnessed the leadership and caring for our community over the years from our City Council and I must thank you for the true leadership you have displayed over the past couple of months. Staff has gone to extremes to accommodate our needs and this has reduced the daily stress that could have resulted from the transition to virtual services. We are truly blessed and I cannot thank you enough. You are in my thoughts and prayers daily. God bless each and every one of you."
Well, thank you, Mr. Matheny, for that positive word. Are there any other statements to be read?
That's the only one we have, sir.
All right, thank you. If there are no other comments, that brings us to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contain items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now will be the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Before we offer anybody the opportunity to speak, is there any council member that has an item you are wanting to draw or speak to? Ms. Councilmember Matheny, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I'd like to pull item number R, as in rabbit, for discussion.
Okay, item number R pulled by Deputy Mayor Matheny. Are there any other items? Then why don't we, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to any item on the agenda?
We do have an applicant that is registered for this item.
For item R?
The final plat for Lancaster Park East, Phase 3 and 4.
Okay, so they're there.
James Schonkweiler.
Okay.
And he is available to speak if anyone has any questions of him.
Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Matheny then. What would you like to address about item number R?
Uh, thank you. I was wondering if Mr. Anderson could give us, I'm gonna cough, I'm sorry, if Mr. Anderson could give us some details about the development, you know, all of the stuff we talk about, the varying facades, the setbacks, the parking. I went out into Lancaster, the other phases of Lancaster, and the houses are all the same. They're just stucco houses that are the exact, you know, shape over and over again with a little tweak. You know, there's parking all within the streets. I provided a photo of it earlier today to the city manager. But the roads are wider, but there's just, you know, cars all over the place, boats parked in the street, you know, RVs in driveways. I just wanna understand if, and I don't know if maybe the existing phase of Lancaster was developed prior to us wanting to elevate the standards. I just, you know, wanna understand what this development is gonna look like.
Mr. Anderson, would you like to speak?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. I sent to Deputy Mayor Matheny earlier today a image and I'm not sure if you received it.
I did.
Okay, great. And so are you referring to Canopy Walk or you're referring to Lancaster Park East?
The development that this is directly tying into.
Okay, this is, yeah, so this will be Lancaster Park East. Let me just share my screen and I'll show you the project.
I'm hoping you're gonna say we have, this occurred prior to us trying to increase the standards.
Um, yes, that is part of, part of it. The Lancaster Park East, some of the approvals occurred prior to sometime in 2017 and so it would have been somewhat right at the time that we started to enforce those requirements. So this may have been one that got by those requirements.
Okay, maybe the applicant could speak to, you know, what's being provided and what's actually, and I wanna know too, like, things that are actually written in a recorded document, you know, not just a promise verbally, but what's actually been committed to. I don't believe there's any street trees in this neighborhood either. I was thinking about it after I drove through. You know, it just, I would like to see a little bit of higher standard of development for this next phase.
Is the applicant available to speak to this question?
Yes, the applicant's here.
Okay, if you could speak up loudly so we can hear you.
Yes, I mean, there are, uh...
Could you share your name and?
I'm James Schonkweiler from Lennar Homes.
Thank you.
Uh, we're talking about Lancaster Plat 3 and 4. In Lancaster 3, there are 34 live oaks, 104 lots. So there are trees, there, um, there's a park in the corner. I'm not exactly sure what the council member is referring to in her comments. There's a park that's being developed in the upper right-hand corner of the north. East corner, a street, a large lake. Palm trees. And you can see the park is tract KK on the map that you're looking at right now. Surrounded by a conservation easement in the back or in the north, which is all preserved. What else can I offer to answer your specific question?
Yeah, my questions are, how many parking spaces are you providing? Are you varying the architectural details of the homes? Because in the previous phase that's constructed, they are not varied. They vary by color, but they're stucco houses that all look pretty much exactly the same. You know, I wanna know the development. Do you have four and a half parking spaces? How wide are your streets? You know, how long are your driveways? All those things. Are you providing street trees?
Uh, yeah, the answer to all those questions is yes. We're providing street trees. The, we're providing basically a couple of different lot sizes, each with a variety of home sites. These are single-family homes with, you know, driveways and garages. The Stormwater Pond Tract JJ that you see in the middle is a, is a large, you know, pond structure that separates the backyards of the homes from one another. And, um, like I said, tract KK, the open space is a, is a park, is a smaller fenced-in dog park with some amenities there to water the dog and let them in a fenced area and then a mulched path around for the community to enjoy.
So you said you're providing four and a half parking spaces?
So I'm not sure what that means. These are single-family houses. They, uh, they would be, each house would have its own driveway and garage.
Right, so, um, I would make a motion to postpone this to the next council meeting and to have Lennar Homes provide all the details of the typical things that we've been asking for. And also, I would like to, I know Mr. Schonkweiler is saying that the facades are varied and I just would like some more detail because what's been built is not varied. So I don't know if he considers that to be varied. I would like to postpone this. I'm gonna make a motion to postpone it to the next council meeting to get further clarification on these items.
I'm sorry. We have a, we have a motion to continue this item to our next council meeting until the items that have been addressed by Deputy Mayor Matheny are addressed in writing. We have a second from Councilmember Askew. I'm sitting here looking for, there you are, they moved you. Councilmember Askew, are there any other further questions?
And Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we just make sure the, to clarify the motion, it will be till the May 14th council meeting?
Okay, this item, the motion is to continue this item at the May 14th council meeting. And we have a second.
Oh, does the applicant need to respond to this?
You're welcome to.
Yeah, thanks. So we don't want to make a postpone to May 14th. We are, this is a plat. We were scheduled originally for April 9th. We, we have been, through the process, the, um, the descriptions of the homes and lots are available and can be made available. We don't have a way of making a presentation in response to the, to the question or suggestion that we did late tonight. So we don't really have a way to do that. What we have done is, just as I said, we've built this thing. We're under construction. We're in a timeline now. We're under construction right now. We are ready to start the landscape and irrigation, irrigation in, uh, the homes. The homes are, um, basically on larger lot sizes than what you may have seen. These are a combination of 50s and 70s. Each home, there's a variety of product available and landscaping and paint colors. Since we don't have a way of presenting that to you visually or graphically, tonight we'd like you to, uh, vote against this motion to delay and approve our plat so that we can keep moving. We're happy to work with the city planners to provide those images and home sites and typical facades. We've already submitted our landscape plans and happy to present images of that to, to the council and make those available. But we've made it available to staff and have no way of making it available directly tonight. So we would like it to reconsider this motion or deny this motion and approve our plat. This will be 104 lots on a large tract of land surrounded by conservation easements and in the middle, a large lake. It's the third phase of a, of a four-phase development. The fourth phase is further down on Nova Road and separate from this. Both are beautifully and well-done, um, projects that will be an amenity or that will be fantastic. I, if I had a way of showing you some of the facades and the landscaping that we have planned, we would, we would do that. All we have is this request that we not be delayed. A delay, I mean, it's a delay from April the 9th where we were hoping to be heard. Here we are tonight with this request that really relates to a subdivision that was built a couple of years ago under a different standard and not to what we're building now and what we've presented to the City of St. Cloud. And, uh, we'd like that these projects, Phases 3 and 4 of Lancaster Park East, stand on their, their own merits and not on the demerits of something that, that we don't know what you, what you saw or what you're referring to and have no way of responding to tonight.
Uh, Councilmember Trace, are you willing to speak to this?
Yeah, is it possible, I mean, based on approval timing of some of these developments, is it, I don't know if we can add some of those standards that it was already approved with, without it, with the altering facades? I think that's what your Deputy Mayor Matheny is talking about in the parking requirement. This one, I think, might have even been before the four and a half parking spot requirement, but probably went through the county as well with their parking requirement was about the same. So I just don't know. If that isn't already in the approvals, I don't know if we can add that.
Mr. Menzares, could you?
Well, you are, this is at the final plat stage and under the Land Development Code. The reason why staff brought it back with a recommendation of approval is because the final plat meets the requirement basically of the code in the preliminary plat. So you are correct, Mr. Trace, at this point. Generic comments or standards, and I'm not sure what we're specifically talking about, may not be appropriate to add at the final plat stage. However, I do think the council is entitled to get some answers to these questions and get a feel about what the project's gonna look like and, and address it from, from that perspective as Councilwoman Matheny's motion is basically intended to be. So...
And one of the other questions I have is regarding landscaping on the individual lots. Deputy Mayor Matheny brought up the street trees, which I think is a good thing, but then also facade requirements of not doing St. Augustine grass on the whole lot and those kind of requirements. Just, I would like to know if those are applicable to these future phases in all communities or if they are, you know, things are grandfathered in from those Land Development Code changes.
Mr. Menzares?
Well, just to answer that question, I can, the grandfathering essentially is not really what's applicable here. What's applicable is what was the preliminary plat approved with? And the final plat is basically determined to be, once reviewed by the city staff and city engineer, is the final plat consistent with the approved preliminary plat? And that's why it's before you. So I'd have to, I'm assuming that, and Mr. Anderson or someone on staff, it wouldn't be in front of you unless someone had reviewed the current final plat and said it's consistent with the approval. So, uh, the answer to your question would be, it would not be, it would, it is probably inconsistent with your code to start adding these at the final plat stage.
Mr. Schonkweiler, I think the problem is, is you really haven't done a good job in answering Deputy Mayor's Matheny's questions. And you've come before us tonight as a representative and you should be able to answer these questions that I think are very simple questions that she has. And, you know, if you can't do that, this is probably gonna go down in defeat. Deputy Mayor Matheny, would you like to just clarify again what you're asking for?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's like, third time's the charm, right? Like, I wanna know parking, I wanna know, are there street trees provided? I wanna have details about the facade. You know, Andre, Mr. Anderson would be able to give you the list of the things that we look for, the setbacks to the driveways, offsetting the air conditioners. You know, I just wanna know all that. My motion stands.
Yeah, and, and I can answer all of those questions, which is, which is, and the answer is straightforward. There are street trees. The facades vary by the type of house that's built on each lots. The lot size varies. The lots are surrounded in the back by conservation areas or by a large lake. There are bushes. Somebody asked about, there's a mixture of St. Augustine and Bahia grass. I think it's Bahia at the park and with mulch and, uh, street features, you know, like benches and hardscape features back, uh, back there. The parking is off-street, designed to be, by design, designed off-street with driveways and garages provided. There are a variety of homes being offered and sold now. Each homeowner picks a, a house that they wanna put, that fits on the variety of lots. There's a wide variety of things that we're doing in both Lancaster Park 3 and 4 that may or may not be done in, uh, in what you're talking about in the, in the past or what you're referring to. And what I'm saying, I struggle answering the questions is because I don't have a way of graphically showing you the things that I'm describing with my words, which are the mixture of bushes and live oaks, the streetscape, the lighting, the, um, the park, the, the variety of lot sizes and a variety of facades that are offered to owners back there. So that's the, that's the, that's the difficulty, Mayor, in answering the question is the lack of ability to provide a graphic response.
Councilmember Cooper, would you like to speak?
Yes, I think we've already gone up and down and I think we're in pass right now. Might as well just go ahead and make a motion. We got a motion and a second. Let's go and move on.
I'm worried. Is there any other discussion?
I do have one question as the applicant. We have been through all the review processes with staff who has recommended approval tonight and not another delay. What specifically would we be asked, what would be the benefit to the city? What's the, what's the goal here? And what's the intended outcome for the applicant to be able to legitimately, and in this new process as well, respond to these questions? The images are available, but facades are different. The conservation easements are in place. The park is real. The work is being done and the, and the projects are fundamentally approved under the, and reviewed under all the current codes, meet them all. We're not asking for any last-minute variances or, or, we're not asking for any change at all. We've been recommended for approval by the people that have reviewed this, this off. And we've been recommended for approval by the people that have, have reviewed this, uh, this offering, uh, which are your staff. So I'm not sure how to help, um, I'm not sure how it helps us to move this to May fourteenth. And it hurts us as the applicant as we have been moved from April ninth to, to now. So there's a detriment to us and no, I don't see a benefit to you. And would like to get approved tonight.
Thank you. Are, are we ready to vote? The motion is that we postpone, yes. Uh, Mr. Ask, Councilmember Askew?
No, I'm just getting my mic ready.
Okay. Madam Court, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
The postponement, yes.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Uh, yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Is there anyone to speak to the consent agenda?
I, I just want to say one thing about, um, a lot of these items are procurement-related. I just want to commend, uh, the procurement staff. They went through a lot of effort for, uh, there's probably ten items on here for procurement and, uh, purchasing vehicles, vendors, a bunch of stuff. So I just want to thank them for their time on this.
Madam Court, is there anyone else that has anything else to say to the consent agenda?
We don't have anyone present in the chambers at this time.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda with the continuance already approved for item number R?
So moved.
We have a motion from Council, Deputy Mayor Matheny. Have a second from Councilmember Trace, Madam Court.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to public hearings. Item number one, Madam Court.
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida to annex into the city of St. Cloud, approximately thirty-six point twenty-seven acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Mabel Simmons Road, west of Westshore Drive, in accordance with voluntary annexation provisions of chapter one seven one point zero four four Florida statutes.
Thank you. Who do we have speaking?
Mr. Mayor, this is Andre Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, we just have the floor.
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Mr. Mayor, could I also ask that the clerk read the second item and the third item because they're all related?
Yes, Madam Court, your items two and three.
First reading and transmittal for ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero five. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida assigning a future land use designation of low-density residential to approximately thirty-six point twenty-seven acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Mabel Simmons Road, west of Westshore Drive, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing on the planning commission's recommendations and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability copies on file and effective date. First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero six. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida assigning a zoning district of R one, single-family dwelling compatible with low-density residential future land use designation adopted by ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero five, approximately thirty-six point twenty-seven acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Mabel Simmons Road, west of Westshore Drive, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, filing on the planning commission's recommendation, proof of publication, severability, conflicts and effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, um, the applicant has again requested a continuance to resolve some ongoing discussions that we're having regarding the annexation, the comprehensive plan amendment, as well as the zoning map amendment. So my request tonight is to, um, continue this item to a date certain, which would be ma- um, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Uh, we have a motion to continue the items, uh, to May the twenty-eighth by the applicant, items one, two and three. Uh, so when you do each one of these, it'll, uh, in order, could I have a motion for continuance of item number one?
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Matheny want to say something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I have, uh, just a couple of comments. Like, this is the third time that they've gotten onto our agenda in a row and then pulled it off at the day of the meeting. I think that's a little frustrating for everyone. Um, if we're continuing this again, I say we continue it for like six months and have them get all of their ducks in a row before they come back. Um, the second concern I have, um, is that this is an old burrow pit. And, you know, when I was having my agenda review, I asked, you know, really, what are they intending to do with this piece of property? This really doesn't seem like a, a great piece of property and they want to make single-family homes. My concern is that this is a burrow pit and typically burrow pits are dug, you know, as deep as they can go, fifty, a hundred feet deep. And usually the side slopes do not meet the, um, side slopes required not to fence the pond. So I'm concerned about how they would handle, um, you know, putting homes right next to basically an attractive nuisance. So those are my comments of the applicant. And also in the background for these agenda items, one, two and three, they had some, um, language that wasn't completely clear. It said that we had voted to move, voted to approve this on two of them, which we haven't. We've only voted to continue it and this is our third or fourth time. So, I mean, I would, I would want to push this out a little ways and so we can quit playing this game where it gets moved in our council meeting.
Is the applicant available?
Mr. Mayor, um, no, the applicant, um, is not available for this item. They did not register to attend. Um, Deputy Mayor Mathy, if I could respond to a couple of items. Um, one, you're correct. Um, the wording of the motion in the staff report was written awkwardly. And the intent was to indicate that the item was being continued, was approved to be continued to a date certain. It wasn't intended to reflect that it was being approved. And so I, 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 I thank you for bringing that to attention again. The second item, when you mentioned that you'd want to make a motion to continue it to, uh, six months, unfortunately, that is not possible, given the new statute of requirements that says, um, any development approvals that are submitted to the city has to be acted on within, um, hundred and twenty days. So the applicant's opportunity would be to withdraw the application because you made a motion to continue in six months. It would go beyond the date for which the city is required to act and it would be automatically approved.
Okay, I, I'll make a motion then to postpone this for three months, um, where they can come back.
I'll second that.
I don't know what date certain that is, if somebody could figure that out.
I'm checking right now.
Thank you.
And that was just dropped dead.
July.
Time. Drop dead time after that. They don't do anything.
Well, that would be up for them, right? So they only have, is, is that right, Andre? Like, if they don't submit, what happens at that point? They withdraw?
Oh, well, again, they would have run, run out of the clock and then we would issue a notice saying this a- application has expired.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're, we're looking at sometime in July, uh, but I don't think we need.
The meeting in July would be July twenty-third.
Oh, don't we usually cancel the second meeting in July?
Well, we're canceling the first meeting because it's right around the Fourth holiday.
Okay.
And we do the second meeting.
Okay.
So we're, we're looking at, we have a motion to continue to the July twenty-third meeting?
Yes.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And is this just for item one? Do we have to vote on all three separate? Okay.
Yes, I think so. Madam Court, will you, uh, please call the roll for item number one continuance, July twenty-third?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Could I have a motion that we continue item number two to July twenty-third?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilmember Cooper, a second from Deputy Mayor Matheny, Madam Court.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Could we have a motion for the continuance of item number three? Item number ordinance twenty twenty oh six.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Askew, Madam Court.
And just to clarify, that's a continuance to July twenty-third?
Yes, sir, for all three of them.
Okay.
July twenty-third.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Bring us to item number four. Madam Court?
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero nine. An ordinance of the city council, city of St. Cloud, Florida establishing the proposed property known as Old Hickory and further describe herein and recognizing the Old Hickory Community Development District, created and chartered by Uniform General Law and Uniform Community Development District Act of Florida, Chapter one ninety, Florida statutes, two thousand and one and thereafter, acknowledging the Uniform District Charter expressed in sections one ninety point zero zero six dash one ninety point zero four one Florida statutes and as referred and provided by section one ninety dot point zero zero four four Florida statutes and confirmed by section one ninety nine point one thirty-one three Florida statute establishing the district on the property proposed in this petition and designating the initial members of the district or the board of supervisors and designating the proposed land area within which the district may arrange the finances, finance its basic infrastructure system, facilities, services, improvements and projects, providing per sevability and effective date.
I think we have a recommendation from the staff. I'll recognize Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Uh, this item you heard at, at our last meeting and we have since been, been discussions with the applicant to, to work through the inter-local agreement. And we are not yet complete. And as such, the applicant has agreed to, um, continue, request a continuance of this item to the May fourteenth city council meeting. The applicant has registered for the meeting.
Would the applicant like to speak? Is the applicant here wanting to speak? Madam Court? Okay, is this Mr. Schunkwiler again?
It is, I'm Jim Schunkwiler, yes.
Would you like to speak?
The applicant for this one is Jan Carpenter?
Jan Carpenter, we got the wrong person then. Jan Carpenter available?
Mr. Mayor, um, Jan Carpenter is the legal counsel for, um, the applicant. Uh, and, and to spanoshen that the applicant is Lennar Homes.
Okay.
But it does not appear that Ms. Carpenter is on, is online.
Mr. Cooper, your speakers off, are you on?
I'm back to the same thing again.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I left it on.
Just to acknowledge that James Schunkwiler is with Lennar Homes and he is available to speak.
Okay, Mr. Schunkwiler, are you wanting to speak to this item?
Yes, I would like to speak. And, uh, I, um, I have our, uh, Division Vice President here as well.
Oh, Jan.
Is Jan here?
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm, yes, I'm, yes, I'm, yes. Whoa, that doesn't, that doesn't. Good, are you all getting your names?
Well, listen, I've recognized Jane Schunkwiler first. Are you wanting to speak, Mr. Schunkwiler?
This, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, and if I may, uh, just the, I know Jan's having a little trouble getting in with everything. Just so, just to give you a little bit more background on where we have, we've been working with, um, with Ms. Carpenter to try to address the issues that were raised by the city council at the introduction, first reading. Now, we think we're well underway to bring something back that the city council would, uh, would, would find favorable and given the assurances that you've been looking at for this project in the community development district. That's really what the reason for the, uh, for the continuance. Staff's recommendation on this hasn't changed, which is that the application petition meets the requirements of this chapter uh, related, uh, to creating a community development district. Uh, so the continuance really was to allow staff, uh, a little bit more time to look at these documents, put them in, and, and, and work on them so that we can bring them back to you and after a good, a good, a good review of them and make a recommendation to you. Uh, and that's really the only purpose for the continuance. And I think that's what Ms. Carpenter would say if she wasn't being, wasn't getting that echo, echo. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Court, do you have anyone else to speak to this at this point?
We have no one in the audience to speak on this.
All right. Then could I entertain a motion for continuance to May fourteen?
So moved.
We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from, was that, was that Askew?
Uh, it's Cooper.
Mr. Cooper has a second. Madam Court, will you please, uh, call the roll for the continuance of item number twenty twenty dash oh nine?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye, but I do not want to keep doing this over and over and over.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Madam Court, could you please read item number five on the public hearings?
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty dash twelve. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida prescribing the manner of holding the regular election to be held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November each election year to wit November third, twenty twenty, with a primary election August eighteen, twenty twenty, if required, pursuant to chapter twenty, article one, section twenty of the Code of Ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this item? I don't see anyone in the chambers. Madam Court, do you have anyone?
No, there is no one in, in the audience to speak on this item. However, this is the final reading of the ordinance for the city election for council mayor seat number one, council seat number two and council seat number three. And we will have a primary election on August eighteenth, if there's more than two candidates, um, registered for a seat. And the election date for the general election will be November third, twenty twenty. And the election date for the general election will be November third, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk. Do I have any, uh, discussion by the council?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty twelve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, a second from whom? I see two lights on.
Lenat.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yeah.
Okay, make sure I got the right person. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
It brings us to Council Action Items. Item number one, Madam Clerk?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero sixty-one R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater service agreement from Jones et Nona LLC for residential development known as Preston Cove, located in unincorporated areas of Osceola County and the north side of Jones Road, south of Jack Brack Road, east of Narcousie Road, west of Outback Road, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
All right, Mr. Wheeler will address this. Mr. Wheeler?
You hear me, Mayor?
Yes, I can.
This is a, a, a six hundred and one unit development that's located, as, as just read, they're off of Jones Road, uh, which is your standard water and sewer agreement. What you see before you is basically a location, flat map. Uh, next slide will show you basically an aerial of the proposed layout of the development. Next slide, uh, is basically staff's recommendation as approval of the water and wastewater agreement. This is a standard wastewater, water and wastewater agreement. There's no special conditions, anything different than in your standard agreement, uh, recommended for approval. We have a few slides here that show you some of what the proposed development looks like. Uh, we'll go to that next slide, will show you a layout of the proposed, uh, layout of the development. And the next slide begins to show you some of the elevations of the different, uh, buildings to discuss to be built in the, in the development. Next slide. And then the next slide. And then the, another slide, another view. And then the final view of a park area. The final slide.
And, Mr. Wheeler, this is, uh, meets all the requirements that the City Council's put forward as far as parking?
It has all the standard conditions that you require, as, uh, Council, Councilmember Matheny had brought up earlier, the parking requirements, the setbacks, uh, those, those types of things.
Are you, are you done, Mr. Wheeler?
Yes.
Do you have anything else, Mrs. Sturgeon?
No, Mayor.
Is, uh, Mr. Hindle here?
Yes, I'm online.
Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I, I know some of the concerns of, of the council, and we kind of adhere to those in, in our layouts now to make sure that we address those. So for this development, all of the townhomes are rear-loaded townhomes. They either front a street, or they front a open space upon a muse. The, um, we've provided two hundred and ninety-nine on-street parking spaces. There'll be paved parallel spaces, uh, throughout the development. There's also additional spaces that were provided in the development of the parks. Uh, we have twelve acres of parks on the site, forty-four point six acres of open space. The, um, and all of the landscape in this development is native Florida landscaping, not Florida-friendly, native Florida landscaping. Uh, all the rear yards will be the hea or a native Florida ground cover. And, um, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience or online to speak to this, Madam Clerk?
I don't have anyone in the chambers, and I don't have anyone online.
Thank you. I'll recognize any of the council members that like to speak to this item. Councilmember Trace?
Uh, motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty sixty-one R.
Second. A motion from Councilmember Trace, do I have a second?
Second.
Who gave me the second, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Cooper made the second. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. That brings us to item number two, Madam Clerk?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero sixty-six R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater service agreement from Anderson Holdings LLC, Clint S. Simpson, Dina G. Simpson, and K R P C Small LLC, a residential development named Silver Springs, located in the unincorporated areas of Osceola County, on the south side of Jones Road, south of Jack Brack Road, east of Narcousie Road, west of Outback Road, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Okay.
Right, Mr. Wheeler?
Yes, this, uh, another development, this is located, as I said, on the south side of Jones Road. What you have before you here is the, uh, the location map that shows its location. And this will be a development that will provide two hundred and ninety-eight units. Next slide shows basically an aerial with the location layout of the, uh, proposed, proposed development. And then, uh, next slide is our staff recommendation. Again, this is your standard water and sewer agreement, uh, all the same conditions as we, as you just approved in the previous agreement. Offers, they're identical agreements. Provide for the same requirements, as pointed out here, other things, the, the parking, the setbacks, the size of the homes, et cetera, the things that are the standard things you provide in your water and sewer agreement. Uh, next slide, we have two slides here to show again, like, like the other development, your proposed layout. This is a, the proposed lot layout in the development, different sized lots and things, and some elevations. Next slide shows an elevation of homes on the forty-five, fifty-foot lot, lots. And then that last slide shows, uh, the bungalow homes. So I believe there's probably somebody here to speak to this development, but staff recommends approval of your standard water and sewer agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Hindle? Are you here to speak to this? Or Joe Thacker?
Joe Thacker, five one five Bryant Street, two seven three four one. Uh, good evening. I hope you all are doing well. As Mr. Wheeler said, we provided all of the standard conditions in your water and sewer agreement. Right down the street from the one that you just approved. The two hundred and ninety-eight lots, there are four different types of, um, lot sizes and product. There's a very large, uh, amenity center, uh, in the middle of the, uh, development. It, it has a pool, cabana, tot lot, playground. There are plenty of parking spaces around that particular, um, amenity, as well as then throughout the, uh, project itself. The engineer of record is also available to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience or online to speak to this item, Madam Clerk?
I don't have anyone in the audience at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper, your light is off. Are you wanting to speak to this item?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Would any council member like to speak to this item? Could I entertain a motion for adoption?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty sixty-six R.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
Councilmember Trace, I have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Cooper?
You got to turn your mic on, Mr. Cooper.
Oh, it's back on. Yes.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number three on the Council Action. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero eighty-four R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, describing the date of the election for the primary election if necessary, and the offices to be voted for, the non-nominations period for candidates and the precinct locations.
Madam Clerk, are you going to speak to this item?
Yes, sir. Um, this is the resolution to set the nomination period, and that will be beginning June eighth at noon and ending at noon on June twelfth. That's a Monday through Friday, and that is in coordination with the county supervisor elections and the other offices in the county.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience or online to speak to this item?
I do not have anyone in the audience to speak at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any motions or discussion by council? Councilmember Cooper?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper, a second from Deputy Mayor Matheny. Madam Clerk? Call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number four under Council Action.
Resolution, Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero eighty-six R. A resolu- resolution of the City Council, City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving, approving the fourth amendment to the February nine, two thousand and six lease agreement with Krabby Bills of St. Cloud LLC for the Marina Building Premises, providing for the deferment and rent of the period not to exceed three months, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to extend the lease.
Is there anyone on staff to speak to this? Yes, sir, may I be recognized?
Please, Mrs. Sturgeon.
Yes, thank you. If you recall, at the April ninth meeting, Krabby Bill's management had requested a deferral of their rent, um, and I recommended sixty days. And then there was discussion with council about their employees and, and how many employees they were going to keep, and how many were furloughed. They had furloughed some employees. But over the weekend, I did receive a notification from their management team that they did receive their PPP loan from the federal government, and they would be bringing back all of their employees. So the cost for a three-month deferral is seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents with a six-month repayment term. I recommend we defer their rent for those three months with those terms. Thank you. Would there be anyone in the audience or online to speak to this item?
I do not have one in, anyone in the audience, and I don't have anyone signed up, um, to speak on this item.
Okay. I assume the applicant or anyone from Krabby Bills is not here, are they? Just to be sure.
No, sir.
Will entertain discussion of motion by council? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to provide some continuity of information. If anybody was watching our last council meeting, I'd also asked that we could do the same extension for another tenant. We only have two tenants, and the other one was the, um, snow cone or ice cream vendor down at the lakefront. As you'll notice, it's not on the agenda. I did confirm with the city manager that they said, "Thank you so much," but they were going to be able to, um, cover their rent. So, um, just if anybody was following this and wondered what happened with, with that. Um, the other issue that I brought up during my agenda review is, and I'm sorry, I don't have my agenda pulled up because I only have the one monitor here, so I can't have them both pulled up. I can't see you. But I believe the repayment was September. Is that right, um, city manager?
That was correct in the, in original document.
So, so my concern was, if we're agreeing to, um, give them a three-month deferment on the rent, which was basically April, May, and June, so then we're saying, let's, let's hope we're back up and running in some kind of fashion in July. So we're basically going to say that they have to repay the seventeen thousand dollar deferment by September. I feel that's very tight. I, and, um, they have many, many years left on their lease. I would, I would like to see if we could defer the repayment a, a little longer because I certainly don't want to, like, give them this three months and then, you know, drop the hammer on them and say, "You got to come up with your, you know, thirty thousand dollars by September for your three months' rent and then three months deferred." So I'd like to defer it maybe until, um, April of, uh, twenty twenty-one. And, um, the other thing is, I found an error in the resolution, in the heading of the resolution. At the last sentence, it said that we were also giving them a extension on their lease of three months, which we're not. So that's supposed to have been corrected. I know it's a different process now. It would have been handed to us as we walked in, but, um, so I'm hoping that resolution was fixed, um, for, for signature. But I would like to, um, and if anybody else has any comments, but I would like to make a motion to defer the repayment until April of twenty twenty-one.
Okay. You'll wait just a minute, Mr. Mazzara?
Uh, just going to point out that, as Councilwoman Matheny pointed out, there was a mistake in the resolution that was in your packets. The miss, the resolution that the city clerk read was actually the corrected one. Uh, so that's the one that we would present to the mayor if you're going to approve this. Uh, and also, the proposed agreement actually had the repayment date of October twenty-fourth of, of, uh, of twenty twenty. So, um, but I think, understanding Councilwoman Matheny's motion can quickly change the, the agreement if it's approved. Thank you.
Would, would there be any other discussion from other council members? Councilmember Trace?
I'm, I'm good with Deputy Mayor, Mayor Matheny's, uh, suggestion. That's a good one.
Councilmember Askew?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, too. Can they pay it before, or, you know, if they want to pay it before, great. Um, because that's part of the PPP plan, uh, twenty-five percent of it goes to your rent lease. So they might have that money. So, great, I appreciate everybody working with Krabby, so, or any business really at this point.
Deputy Mayor Matheny, would you like to state your motion now?
Sure. I make a motion to approve with the revised documentation that was read into the record, making one adjustment where the repayment is on or before April. I don't know what the first day in April is. Uh, is April first on a Saturday? I don't know. The first Monday in April, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make that a second.
I'll second that.
I've already beat you to it, I'm sorry.
All right.
I beat you to it. I made a, I made a second. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? And, uh, the motion is for extending this to the first Monday in April, twenty twenty-one, with the changes that were specified.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to item number five under Council Action, Madam Clerk?
Discussion regarding Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan, Providing Financial Technical Assistance to Local Businesses, Businesses, Nonprofit Agencies Affected by COVID-nineteen to Promote Economic Development in the City of St. Cloud, Florida.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, sir, you may be speaking.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Anderson will address this item.
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Um, as, um, as you all are obviously know, we are going through a very unusual time due to COVID-nineteen. And the city manager, um, convened a task force to look at ways that we could provide, um, local assistance to businesses within, um, the city limits. And so we have put together what we consider an economic recovery and stimulus plan that would work to assist, um, businesses as well as individuals within the development community, um, primarily to focus on business continuity and to ensure that folks are able to continue to work. Um, this proposed plan is to supplement and not duplicate state and federal funding programs and to provide additional assistance where we can. Um, just as a matter of, of, of context, uh, we have been receiving on a regular basis from the county, a business damage assessment report that lists all the businesses that have registered with the county to indicate what type of losses they are experiencing. And as of April twenty-second, we have, uh, fifty-three businesses within the city that have registered damages, damages based on COVID-nineteen. that have registered damages, damages based on COVID-nineteen to the tune of three point six million dollars. Within that group, nine permanent positions and hundred forty-six temporary employee positions have been laid off as a result. So we are proposing to put together a plan that would try to help where we can. Uh, we plan to roll this out, assuming the council approves this, in three phases. Phase one would be within the first thirty days of approval. Phase two would be thirty to ninety days, and phase three would be ninety days plus. And phase three, we would consider to be sort of post-COVID to ensure that we provide additional assistance if not provided in the first two phases. The proposed funding for this stimulus plan is one point two five million dollars, and will come from multiple funding sources. The two sources that we have identified to date are funding sources that we believe would not have a direct impact on the general fund. The first is the OUC Business Retention Fund. We propose to use five hundred thousand dollars from that fund. We have already contacted and spoken with OUC, and they are on, on board and happy for us to utilize those funds. We have also proposed to use, um, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from the building fund, and this would be in the form of waiving, um, building permit fees. This, uh, again, will not impact the, um, general fund directly. We currently have, um, um, a surplus in the reserves for the, for the building department, and as such, um, this is an opportunity for us to draw that down, and we were advised by the auditors during our review that this is something that we should, we should look into. Um, more specifically, for phase one, we are proposing two specific grant programs for using half of the five hundred thousand dollars on phase one. One would be what we call the Small Business Grant Program of two hundred thousand dollars. This would, um, provide up to ten thousand dollars for eligible businesses that have been affected by COVID-nineteen. And then the second grant for fifty thousand dollars would be, um, for nonprofit 501(c)(3) agencies that provide service to the city of Saint Cloud, and each agency would be eligible for up to five thousand dollars each. These two grant programs would be funneled through our existing intake process in our procurement department through our grants assistant and our economic development manager, and they would screen the applicants for eligible, for minimum eligibility. Then we would forward it on to a panel made up of several, um, individuals within the city to ensure that they meet all the criteria, meet all the different benchmarks and performance requirements of, um, receiving these grants. Phase two of the, um, plan is for up to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Again, it's for waiving building permit fees um, to allow for, um, the continuity of, of business for, um, individuals employed in that industry. And then as I said, phase three is up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which will be the remaining half of the five hundred thousand dollars from the OUC Retention Fund, and this will be geared towards post-COVID, um, programs. We are still working on all the details of that, and will, um, bring back, uh, more details as to what that might be in phase three, but at this point it's still unknown because we don't know whether or not we are meeting all the needs or majority of the needs of the businesses at this, at this time. Um, the plan meets the Economic Development Strategic Plan Goals as well as the growth management goals, and staff is recommending approval of the proposal to establish the Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan. And we ask that the city council, um, have a discussion and provide direction for staff to proceed with, uh, and, and to bring back a resolution and budget amendment to implement the program. Um, the finance director is available to answer questions regarding availability of funds and how this might be set up for tracking purposes, and, um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. First of all, is there anyone in the audience or online that has requested to speak to this item? Madam Clerk?
I do not have anyone in the audience at this time.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to speak to this item. I certainly feel like we need to do everything that we can uh, to assist small businesses that have absolutely been rocked by this, uh, pandemic and, um, you know, I believe the small businesses certainly the backbone of so much of what we do economically as a city. Um, I am very appreciative for all the work that, uh, the staff has done to put together uh, this economic recovery and stimulus plan, and I certainly would love to see, uh, the council uh, approve and direct the staff to proceed and bring back, uh, a well-thought-out resolution and, uh, budget amendments to implement in order to do everything that we can as quickly as we can uh, to assist, uh, local small businesses. At this time, I'll open it up for any discussion from, uh, council. Councilmember Askew?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think it's a great plan. I agree with, uh, the mayor. Anything we can do for the small businesses out there is, uh, is fantastic. I, I would just like to throw in one little caveat in there of some way we can explore. Um, if a business is applying for, um, recovery from the city, can we put in there, "Did you receive any, um, recovery so far from the SBA or, or anything like that?" Um, I just really want to hit those businesses that got nothing. Um, you know, you have two businesses. One had a little bit of a stimulus package, and the second one got nothing at all. So I just, you know, maybe we could put something in there just to see if you've gotten any recovery at all. Thank you, Mayor.
I would certainly agree with that, that they ought to be our first priority. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion, but I want to open up to any other discussion. Councilmember Trace?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo, um, uh, both your comments and, um, Mr. Askew's comments, um, and applaud staff. Uh, they came out of the gate with a great, great plan, um, right when the, the shutdown happened. They sent out a bunch of information and put together a bunch of, uh, ideas and then worked through those and then put together, uh, a great plan for the subscription. So I want to thank them.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Well, I'm going to be the, uh, the poke in the eye on this one. Um, I think part of this plan is great. I support the using of OUC's funds to help the small business in the 501(c)(3). I think that's a great idea. Um, I also had suggested to the city manager if we could create a panel that wasn't just city staff making these recommendations, and I asked him if he could reach out to the Saint Cloud Chamber as well as Main Street to see if they would each put a member on the panel. Um, my thought was maybe three, like one city employee and then one from the chamber and one from Main Street to evaluate these, um, applications and make recommendations to city council. I think that's, I think that's a fantastic idea. I am strongly opposed to providing a waiver of fees for, um, building permits. I mean, I think most of us ran on a campaign platform of making development pay for itself. Development is an essential service. Construction is still going on. I just don't think that we should be waiving fees for development at this time. Um, you know, we're drowning in growth. Or everything is, you know, we're really struggling to keep up with everything, so to provide the subsidy to this, to me, I, I, I cannot support that. Um, I brought this up in my agenda review, and I was hoping that it was, be changed before it was presented, but it, it wasn't because what we had talked about as an amenable solution to this would be maybe to provide, um, waivers to commercial development that's coming into the city, that's creating jobs. I could see supporting that. But I, I absolutely can't see how we could support, um, waiving building permit fees for, um, single-family homes. I mean, that to me, I just, I just can't support that. I think the first part of it is fantastic. And like I said, I'd love to create a, a panel and not just have city, um, staff reviewing it, but to have the, the three-party agreement. But the seven hundred fifty thousand, if we're going to do that, then let's, let's try to bring in development that we're looking for, redeveloping commercial, um, buildings or bringing in, um, new commercial with economic growth.
Thank you. Would any other council members like to speak to this item? Councilmember Trace?
Um, so, uh, with Deputy Mayor, um, Matheny's comments, um, I, I agree with, uh, most all that, but I think there is a good part of the phase-two implementation of, um, waiving some of the, the BTR fees, um, if that is even, even legal and justifiable. Um, but the way I was looking at this is we're really implementing phase one now because that had the specific detail, and then phase two would come back to us in the next thirty days because all of it says, "Consider this, consider that." I was hoping staff would put together a plan for, for some of that phase-two and phase-three implementation as we work through this.
Councilmember Askew?
I, I'm, I'm, thanks for opening my mind to that a little bit. I, I, I sort of agree with, um, Deputy Mayor Matheny with some of those. Um, is that something, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Trace as well, is that timing on that second part of phase two, is that coming back was kind of cleaning up a little bit?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Yes, Mr. Askew and, and council, that's exactly why we brought it from the council to get your input, and we'd be coming back with that second phase. And again, the, the primary goal was to get phase one rolled out ASAP, and we'll come back with an additional plan with that, um, and, and go out and get some input from other people in the community also. I think that would help, um, satisfy some of those concerns.
Councilmember Askew?
Yeah, just to add, um, I like the idea as well, um, the using the entities Main Street and the Chamber as well. I think that they have some good advice for us as well.
Yeah, I certainly agree also. I certainly agree with, uh, Councilwoman Matheny's, uh, uh, concerns. Uh, I would certainly would love to see more involvement, uh, certainly by Main Street and the council and, uh, the chamber, rather, and, uh, anyone else that, uh, you could certainly have a significant, uh, wisdom and leadership into making this, uh, wide proposal for making a positive impact with local businesses. I certainly like the idea of, you know, what can we do to help facilitate, uh, bringing in economic, uh, commercial development? That's a possibility, but, uh, a- again, I'd like to entertain a motion that we authorize the staff to proceed with, uh, developing an economic recovery and stimulus plan, but especially, uh, you know, moving forward with bringing us recommendations on the first phase and then bringing us back, uh, better ideas for the phase-two and following. Can I make that a motion?
Mr. Mayor, can I be recognized?
Yes. Soon as I get a second motion. Can I have a second for discussion? I'll second. Councilmember Askew has given, gave me a second. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, Mr. Menzares, um, I'm, can you provide some, some clarification? Do we need a motion in the second or does simply, um, consensus or council direction?
Well, you don't, we got to bring it back anyway, but the, you know, the motion doesn't, is okay. Uh, it doesn't matter. We, we have to, to use the OUC money, we're going to have to follow the processes in the, in the, set forth in the agreement, and once we do that, uh, we'll, we'll have to bring it back with the appropriate notice, so we can have it back on the fourteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may, council.
Yes, I just, I, thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, uh, phase two, according to what I just heard from consensus from council, was phase two would be focused on commercial development fee waivers, and we will look at the feasibility of waiving BTRs. I don't know if we legally can do that. We'll need to look at that also. And there was one other thing Deputy Mayor, you said, and I missed it.
Hey, Bill. Um, I talked about the, um, Main Street and, um, the Chamber. And then, um, I was in support of us doing the, the first phase, but the second phase was, it was just about the commercial. Um, if we could do something with job growth or redevelopment of commercial, you know, we have these empty commercial buildings. I'm always like, "How do we get these things redeveloped?" If we could, you know, prioritize that kind of development and not, um, single-family, multifamily homes.
Okay, I got it. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
We'll do, all we need is a consensus at this point, Mr. Menzares.
Oh, well, Mayor, Mayor, you have the motion on the table, so we're okay with you just approving the motion as made in second.
Can we move forward with the vote unless there's more discussion or questions? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
We're, we're approving a motion to have them move forward with bringing something back?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Askew?
Yes.
Councilmember Trace?
Yes.
Mayor Blackwell?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor, there is also a second part to this presentation.
All right.
So the second part is to talk very briefly about the two specific programs within phase one. And again, this is to provide very specific financial assistance to local businesses and to ensure that we provide some, some ability for continuation of sales and services during this pandemic. The two programs that I mentioned previously on the phase one would be the Nonprofit Grant Assistance Program. This is designed to help offset some operational costs of, of, of providing these programs. And as I said previously, it's fifty thousand dollars funding allocation that's being proposed and up to five thousand dollars for eligible nonprofit agency. The second part is the Small Business Grant Program, and this again is to offset operational costs for business continuity and also maybe used for working capital. This funding allocation is proposed at two hundred thousand dollars with up to ten thousand dollars per eligible business. Again, these two programs are consistent with our Economic Development Strategic Plan Goal and the growth management, um, strategic plan goal, and staff recommends approval of the two proposed, um, um, business assistance grant programs so that we can bring back to you at our next meeting with a specific resolution to create these programs, including the associated budget.
Does anyone on staff need to discuss this further? Councilmember Cooper, you're live, so. Do we have a consensus for? Uh, I think you've already got that direction, have you not?
I think so.
Okay.
I'm clear with that, Mayor.
Are there any other council? Thank you. We look forward to you bringing back something to us then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now that brings us to item number six under Council Action. Madam Clerk?
Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Request for Reduction of Lien of Code Enforcement Case Two Thousand Nineteen dash nineteen thirty-nine, Property Address at Seventeen Forty-eight Longleaf Drive, Saint Cloud, Florida.
Okay. Mr. Menzares, are you speaking to this?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Uh, can hear you now.
Okay. Uh, so this item, let me move the screen up. Thank you. Uh, this is with regard to property located at Seventeen Forty-eight Longleaf Drive, uh, here in Saint Cloud. Uh, what's going on here is typically you don't see these lien reduction matters, um, at this level. Uh, you usually see the liens that are above fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this is a lien that currently has accrued, that accrued to twelve thousand four hundred dollars. These liens are typically handled by the special magistrate. However, due to the current situation, the special magistrate has not been able to meet, and, and in this particular instance, uh, the folks that currently own this, that currently have control of this property are, are moving forward with a sale, so, uh, this lien has come up and we've, uh, and they presented this request to the city. So essentially what happened here, this code enforcement case started, uh, with regard to an, uh, basically an abandoned vehicle. Uh, abandoned vehicle might be a little bit, uh, too, too descriptive of a term. Essentially what this was, was a vehicle that, uh, the tag on it was. the tag on it was allowed to expire. It wasn't a dilapidated or junk vehicle. It just didn't have the appropriate tag on it. And, and I think as I explained to you, the request on the respondent, you may understand why. So the lien, as I said earlier, accrued to twelve thousand four hundred dollars. The city had two hundred and twenty-five dollars in costs in it. The current owner of the property or the current people in control of the property are offering a settlement of two, of two thousand dollars to reduce this lien to a payment of two thousand dollars. And the city manager has looked at it and our office and we've looked at it and we believe are recommending approval. The, essentially what we understand going on is the current owner is actually the heirs of the respondent who passed away sometime during this whole thing, which would explain partially why the vehicle's tag expired and why the vehicle is sitting there. Now the current owners, they want to sell the property and so they're offering the settlements. The staff recommends that the lien be reduced to a total amount of two thousand dollars, provided that it's paid within thirty days of today. And if it's not paid timely, then it would revert back to its full amount of, as of twelve thousand four hundred dollars plus the cost.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone here to speak to this item?
I do not have anyone for this item at this time.
Thank you. We'll have discussion or motion by council. Miss, Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, you know, these two items that we have coming up kind of sparked me to have some conversation with the city manager and, and was asking him if, you know, I reviewed what policies we have in place, which there's not much. And I was asking, you know, I think it would be very helpful for him if we could create a matrix for him, just like the Osceola County has something similar, where basically this is the policy that gets adopted by the council. And then, you know, it's not, he needs to make these like decisions every time. So I'd like to see if we could maybe move forward with some language to help him out with that aspect. But, um, you know, I, I, my heart breaks for this family and I think we should give them a bit of compassion at this time trying to settle an estate, a death in the family. You know, I would like us to, to just take the two hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty cents, the actual city staff time that's, that's billed to these people. I would really like to see us be able to show them some compassion and, and just, I know they're offering two thousand dollars, but they also are saying they're barely gonna come out positive on the sale of the house. So I'd like to see if we could move forward with this and, and drop them out to two twenty-five and thirty cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
I echo Deputy Mayor Matheny's comments. I was going to bring up having a, a good policy for us to go through these kind of things. I just want to make sure that when we do that, we make sure that if there are bad actors out there that have continual and reoccurring code enforcement violations, it, it escalates or the, or the waiver of these fines doesn't go away. But in this case, I think it's, yeah, I'm perfectly fine reducing it to the, the actual cost we have with the city.
Thank you. Mr. Menzares?
Nothing further. So with the same provision, that it will be paid within thirty days?
Yes. Mr. Sturgeon? Are you wanting to speak? Yes.
No, sir. No, sir. I'm good.
Could I entertain a motion?
A motion to approve, what are we calling this? The lien?
Reduction of lien for Ozon Brook.
The reduction of lien to the amount of actual staff time of two hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty cents.
I'll second that.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Cooper, a motion from Deputy Mayor Matheny for the reduction of the lien to the amount for administrative cost of two twenty-five thirty. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I think also, let's go ahead and go to the, all right, next time, then we'll take up your recommendation, number seven, under Council Action, Madam Clerk?
Discussion on possible action regarding the request for reduction of lien of code enforcement case two thousand nineteen dash nineteen zero-three property address at twenty twenty-two Eleventh Street, St. Cloud, Florida.
And again, Mayor, this is another similar, similar item. This lien accrues an amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars. It basically involved high grass and weeds on the property located at two zero two two Eleventh Street. The total amount of fine is indicated was three thousand eight hundred dollars and with an accrued cost of two hundred and four dollars and sixty cents. The current owner of the property, who bought this property with the lien in place, so this is a new owner of this vacant piece of property. And they are offering a settlement amount of eight hundred dollars. So if that amount is acceptable to the city council, we would ask that the, the motion include a requirement that it be paid within thirty days or it would revert back to its original amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars plus to two hundred and four dollars and sixty cents.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone to speak to this in the chamber or online?
I don't have anyone in the chambers. Although I did have a John Clark register for, um, to speak on this.
I'm on the phone.
Yes. Just a minute, Mr. Clark.
Okay.
Mr. Clark, would you like to speak now?
Uh, yeah, I just, I'm representing, calling to represent Joe Slaman, who's the owner of the property. And he had submitted a letter which was just read, reducing the rate because this problem was with the people that he bought the property from. And we weren't made aware of it actually until January second because there was a, there was a glitch in the property appraisers recording where it showed Mr. Slaman's address as two one one East Michigan Street, Orlando. And Melissa Howes was trying to get in touch with us to make sure that, you know, we knew about this problem. And, you know, this was the first we had heard about it. So once Melissa Howe got in touch with me, because I represent Joe Slaman, I work with him, she caught me on January second. And on, and because the grass needed cutting again. And on January fourth, which was, you know, two days later, I called her at eight o'clock in the morning and said, we're on it. The grass is cut and it will be maintained. And, you know, in a suitable fashion and you know where we are if anything goes wrong, but we've been cutting it subsequently, waiting for this to go through the, to the magistrate. And, you know, the property owner is, he's undecided at this point whether he's going to build a house or he's, you know, going to try and sell it. But we, we understand the need to keep the, the neighborhood looking good and saleable for, for not only his property, but for the entire St. Cloud area. So, um, Mr. Slaman sent the letter on the seventeenth. And then we got, I spoke many times to Ms. Clockers, Claudia Clockers. And we signed all the, the appropriate notarized documents. And on the twenty-fifth of February, William Sturgeon signed the recommendation to accept the eight hundred dollars. And I know I probably went a little long with that, but the, the important part was that when I first talked to Melissa Howes, she was a cat on a hot tin roof and we're now friends. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, Mr. Matheny, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, um, Mr. Menzares, I'm a little confused on the timing. Are they saying they bought the property with the code enforcement lien or they bought the property and then they didn't mow it?
They, they claimed not to have known it when they bought the property.
Okay, I, I was directing that to our attorney.
So Councilmember Matheny, the answer, I think the answer to that question is yes on both counts. They, they bought the property with the lien on it. However, after they acquired property, the, the, the property still required mowing, which is where I think Melissa House got in and was able to get the current property owner to mow the property. There wasn't a second code enforcement case started against the current property.
Okay. And personally, in this case, I'm fine with their, their settlement amount for other comment.
Mr. Cooper, Councilman Cooper.
Backing on again, um, I have no problem. Generally, it's about ten percent of what the normal cost is what it's in the, in the past. So if it's close to, close to the ten percent, I don't have a problem.
Do I have further discussion or motion by council?
Motion to approve the lien amount, lien reduction amount to eight hundred dollars.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny for reduction. Second, my counsel member Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, well, I, if I'm still on, I appreciate everybody's time and consideration for this. And, you know, we want to be, you know, part of the St. Cloud community. And do I send, do we send the check to Claudia Clocker's office?
Yes, sir, that'd be fine.
Yes, sir.
Thirteen hundred ninth street, St. Cloud.
Three, four, seven, six, nine.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, and I hope everyone stays well.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Okay, bye-bye.
Uh, would it be appropriate this time to talk about the directions that, to this, Councilmember Matheny brought up about coming up with a different plan? Can we just have a consensus? Would you just clarify again what you were talking about, Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Thank you. Um, I think it would just be helpful for the city manager to have, you know, written, a written description of what he's supposed to do and how he's supposed to analyze these, these lien reduction requests. I think, I know that he did reach out to Osceola County and got that as a sample. I think they've been looking at that. I don't know if that's, if that's the perfect solution, but I, I have confidence that they could come up with something that, uh, would help put an official format to, to the lien reduction request. Also, I agree with what Mr. Trace said, you know, there has to be some caveat in there. There's some people that are repetitive, you know, things escalate or their lien reductions don't, they're not qualified for them or whatever. Maybe it's kind of like you have on the water system, if you have a leak, you know, they do give you some forgiveness, but you can't have had a leak within the last twelve months. So maybe there's some language to that effect, but I have confidence they could work out all of the, all of the details.
Mr. Menzares?
Yeah, just, we can talk some more about this, but I'd ask just the council to remember that these code enforcement liens are couched within chapter one sixty-two in Florida statutes. And it sets forth how the liens are to be created. And one of the factors, one of the three factors that the, the entity is supposed to consider in doing this is essentially whether the, the respondent has had any other violations, any other code violations. That's one of the factors. There are three of them. One is how cooperative the respondent was. What's the severity? In other words, is it a public health safety issue? And whether the respondent has any other, any other violations on this property or any other property. So that's what gets considered when, in general, when the fines are, when we consider a fine reduction or a lien reduction. We can try to memorialize that into more of a program. But just so we, again, as I said, when we started talking about these two items, the city council typically does not see these cases. Because in the past, the city council has delegated this authority to the special magistrate under the theory that the special magistrate is the one that heard the case originally. So the special magistrate would have more familiarity with the respondent and how the respondent might have been, might have been responsive, not responsive, cooperative and that kind of thing. So we can certainly look at it some more and put together more in a place, but just generally, and it's always good to tweak it, but that's generally the process we've been using for several years now.
I don't think there's any objections to you taking a look at that to clarify it. Is there?
No.
I don't think so. Thank you. That brings us to item number eight under Council Action. And that is an update regarding Hastings Ranch.
Mayor might be recognized.
Yes, sir. Is that Mr. Tomac or is that the?
That's the city manager.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'd like to recognize Stephanie Holt Camp, Parks and Rec Director.
All right. Ms, Ms. Holt Camp?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Stephanie Holt Camp, Parks and Recreation Director. I do, just wanted to bring back the Hastings Ranch and given, uh, Hastings Ranch property and give an update. Um, back in October, you had, the council had agreed to let us move forward with the due diligence process. We have just completed the Phase One environmental. We got the draft report back last week. Staff didn't have any, any comments, so we should get the final report back in the next few weeks. We also applied for the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant back in February. It's a four hundred thousand dollar grant towards the acquisition of the property. Another grant that we'd like to apply for is a Florida Communities Trust grant. It's up to a four million dollar grant and it can be used after the purchase of the property is made. That grant cycle will come out. Another, we've also been in conversation again with a county about partnering, I'm not, oh, I'm sorry, about partnering on the purchase of the property. Uh, as well as we're working through an interlocal agreement with them on how we're going to transfer the Parks and Recreation Impact Fees from District Three within the county, which is what we would know as the JPA, the Joint Planning Area. So at this time, before we move forward, I just want to, want council's direction on whether they still want to move forward with the purchase of the property. And if, and if so, just to give direction.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Please, Mr. Sturgeon.
Is Mr. Tomac on?
I am.
Hey, Dave.
Davis, good to have you. Would you like to speak?
It's, it's always nice listening to your meetings, Mayor. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
We, we have always thought that this was a good property, so we're very excited if you guys are moving forward to purchase it. If, if you decide that you want the county to be involved in the purchase, we'd be happy to work with Stephanie and, and, and the city manager to, to work out the, the details. I think, I think the key thing that Ms. Holt Camp brought up, that we've been working on for many years now. And we've, we've redone our, our Parks Impact Fee to, um, uh, collect, I think it's twenty-three hundred dollars per single-family home. And I think even this evening, you've seen how many units are just being built along Jones Road. So I would expect that, that fund to grow. I think we're already at about a million dollars for this, for this district. Um, and then we're also reallocating between October and January to, to make up for some of the Impact Fee district changes from the last ordinance. So it's probably a little over a million. The new rates just kicked in in January. So literally, we've got a couple of thousand units out there in the next couple of years that'll be starting that could actually pay into that fund that would become available to you. There's, there's some synergies with the transportation program. You have Jones Road and Zuni Road right there. So if we could take an opportunity to maybe share the stormwater pond on the property and maybe get a little bit of a right of way for the extension of Zuni Road further south, we can maybe bring to bear some funds for that. We'd have to look into that. And then part of this property is passive and conservation type property. There's a potential that we can draw into some of those funds. So we're excited. We'd be glad to work with your staff to figure out ways to, to, to help out. And I think it's a good piece of property.
Thank you, Mr. Tomac. Is there anyone in the audience or online, Madam Clerk, who has come to speak to this?
I do not have anyone, anyone in the audience at this time.
All right, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Matheny, your light is off?
Yeah. Sorry, I work from home these days. I don't get to talk to people very often. Um, I, you know, I've been a big supporter of Hastings Ranch. I love that piece of property. I went out there and I just, you know, if, I understand if anybody's listening to our meetings and, you know, and they haven't experienced it. It's just a beautiful, beautiful piece of property that really doesn't exist very much anymore in, in our area. And really us taking this and converting it into a recreational tract for parks, it's like, it's kept it from being developed. Because I know the developers were beating the door down trying to get this piece of property and, and put a bunch of the door down trying to get this piece of property and, and put a bunch of homes on it. So I just think it's a beautiful piece of property and I love it and I want to move forward. Um, I really personally like the idea of partnering with Osceola County on this piece of property. I like it much better than going after, um, some of these grants because I've had some experience working with property that was purchased with these grants. And, um, you know, there's binders three inches thick with rules of what you can and can't do, and they threaten to take the money back. And, um, you know, there's just a lot of strings and as much as we like to sit here today and say, we're leaving it exactly as it is, you know, there may come a time in the future that we want to make some adjustments to it. I, you know, wanted to stay a park, but let's just say we wanted to put, um, a ball field on it. I don't want to do that, but let's say in the future that happens and, you know, you might run into problems with being able to, to do things. Maybe that's a bad example. I just know, like, it, there's huge, huge requirements and strings that come with this money. So I think if we could find a way to do it with, um, impact fee dollars and, um, you know, our parks fees and things like that, it just makes the property a lot, um, easier for us to deal and manage with in the future.
Well, I would like to also, um, agree with, uh, Deputy Mayor Matheny's, uh, comments. Um, you know, there just aren't many pieces of property like this that, uh, again, we have the opportunity to be able to secure, especially with, uh, a partnership with the county that would help us to move forward with, you know, minimal impact on our finances. I just think it's a great investment. We certainly need, I think, to at least here, um, you know, what are the, uh, uh, financial arrangements and, and just encourage, uh, the staff to be able to continue to move forward and bring us back the recommendations of what the financial numbers are. But I think it's a great piece of property that we just, that we would regret for a long time not, not having. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Are there any objections with allowing our staff to move forward and bringing back recommendations for the possible purchase of Hastings Ranch?
Mayor.
I hear none. Mr. Mizaras?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, I just want to remind the council, when we signed, when they approved the contract to buy the property, we had a two hundred and seventy day essentially inspection period in it. So the plan is to move forward in stages on this and then come back before that two hundred and seventy day period expires and basically have the council get one more look at the, the project and make sure we want to move forward with it. And at that point, we think we'd have all the, uh, the idea would be to have all the financing placed, uh, have all, you know, complete due diligence studies and all that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any objections? I hear none. With that, we have unanimous consent to move forward with recommendations with staff regarding the purchase of Hastings Ranch. Do you have that, Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. At this, it brings us to our city attorney, Mr. Mizaras. Do you have anything for us?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank, I call our production team that helped put together this virtual meeting tonight. Uh, they were working behind the scenes. You don't see them working, they're like ducks. They're calm and cool on the outside and you're paddling real fast into the water. So I thank them for that effort. And I'd like to take this opportunity to announce our, or recognize our police chief to make an, an announcement on some promotions at the police department. Chief Gauntlet?
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon, and good evening, council. How are you tonight?
Very good. It's good to have you here.
Good to be here and I've enjoyed listening to the meeting tonight. As part of our ongoing effort to con, the continual growth and professionalism of the police department, the city manager's been working with me to enhance and grow the command staff of the police department. In keeping it within our current budget, we did some reclassifications. And I'm pleased to announce that we have, um, promoted eight individuals and restructured our command staff ranks from one deputy chief's position to two deputy chiefs' position, subsequently growing a number of ranks. So with that being said, I would just want to advise council, many of these members you do know, one of which is listening in on the, the meeting tonight, Deputy Chief Fran Reinhardt, Deputy Chief Kurt Zilke, Captain Denise Roberts, Captain Ed Mateo, Lieutenant Frankie De La Rosa, his wife, Lieutenant Marisol De La Rosa, Sergeant Mark O'Connor and Sergeant Matthew Hobbs have been promoted and announced today. And we're excited as we go forth with a new progressive reorganization of the command staff, anticipating the long-term growth and building for the future. So thank you very much, Mr. Sturgeon.
Thank you very much. You're, uh, obviously surrounded by some very capable people and we say congratulations to all of them.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have nothing else, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. Um, just everyone stay safe and, uh, thank everyone for their time.
Councilmember Askew.
Ditto. Everyone stay safe. I really appreciate staff coming up with, um, the helping for businesses out there. I think they really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
I have no, nothing to talk about. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny.
Hello. Well, I have one thing. So, um, you know, ever since we've got into this pandemic, you know, I've been talking with the city manager about staff and, and, you know, who has to come into work and, you know, who's getting, who's able to work from home and just kind of talking about all those different, um, parts and pieces that they've all put together amazingly well. I told the city manager, um, actually, we had an interview with Positively Osceola and I was giving props to all the directors, the city manager, the mayor, um, for all of their hard work. I really feel like we, um, jumped on this issue right out of the gate. I don't feel like we drug our feet. Um, you know, I think we were the first, the first place that was scanning people's foreheads for temperatures and, you know, we've really, really done a great job and our staff and employees have done a fantastic job, um, in being flexible and resilient in this crazy time that we're in right now. I know that, um, I'm, I consider myself lucky that I'm able to work remotely, so I've been able to work from home for the last couple of weeks. Um, so I consider myself very, very lucky that my sister's a pharmacist. She's a work, she's got to go to work every day and, um, you know, dealing with people that are sick, so it's a scary, scary time. So I was talking to the city manager about trying to implement something, um, and we've been calling it, uh, like hazard pay, hazard pay for the city employees that have had to come into the office, that have had to, um, and this also goes to the first responders as well, that they've had to come in, they didn't have a choice to like sit at home and, and, and work from home like me. Um, and I wanted to try to come up with some kind of a program where we would be able to, um, you know, reward the people and give them thanks for, for, you know, putting themselves out there and, and on the line. So, um, I know the city of Kissimmee has done something very similar and, um, the city manager has been working with our finance people and, and, um, coming up with a program. I'm going to let him give some more of the specifics, but, um, just bringing it up to see if I could get consensus from the rest of council to try to do something for our employees. Um, really wanting to focus on employees that had to come into work and employees that had to, um, interface with the public as well. So I'm going to hand it over to the city manager.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as you know, uh, the city of Kissimmee is offering a hazardous duty pay in, in several different tiers. Um, what I'm proposing is a three hundred dollar per person stipend per pay period for frontline employees that have direct contact with the public. And then people that have more limited contact, a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, right now, um, if we went back, it's about a half a million dollars a month to cover that. And I, I'd like to take that out of contingents, council contingency to make that work. And here's the reason, we have money to cover it in our current payroll, but remember, we're getting ready to head into hurricane season and I'd rather use that and, and save the cash we have for our payroll system. Um, so we're looking at about a cost of a million dollars for a two-month period. Um, I think it's a good program. I rec, highly recommend we take care of our staff. I have, you guys know my background in public safety. I've been involved a long time in public safety and I can tell you, every staff member has stepped up to the plate and is deserving of this hazardous duty pay.
Well, I would certainly be supportive of that recommendation. Are there any other discussions from council members regarding that proposal? Do I have a consensus then that, uh, we, uh, allow the city manager to move forward with that recommendation? I don't see any objections. I see heads nodding, so I guess that means yes.
I'm good with that. I could see all of you. Thank you, Mayor. I have, I have consensus. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
And that's all I had, just everybody stay safe. And, um, also if, just a, one little note, if, if you're wearing your gloves and your masks into the store and you come out of the store, please dispose of them properly. I know we see a lot of, um, abandoned and discarded, uh, especially latex gloves in the parking lot. You know, there's trash cans everywhere. Please, you know, take care of your litter.
Thank you. With that, uh, I'd also like to say thanks to all of our heroes that are working, uh, to serve our city, certainly starting first of all with all of our city employees. You guys, uh, have been amazing. You've rolled up your sleeves, you've kept working. So many of you are first responders, have been on the front lines, uh, of all of this and, uh, we are just so blessed to have such an amazing team of workers. And I'm certainly pleased, uh, with the recommendation that Deputy Mayor Matheny brought for. Uh, would also like to just say thank you to all of the, uh, essential business workers in the community, uh, that, uh, you know, have worked in the grocery stores and, uh, the pharmacies and all the other places that have been essential to us to continue being able to function. Could you imagine what it would be like if all of the, uh, the grocery stores just shut down and the workers didn't show up? You know, I, so I just want to say thank you to all the nurses and the doctors and everyone who's, uh, uh, had, helped, helped us keep some of our sanity through all of this, uh, stuff that's been going on. And again, I just want to agree with everyone else, just please be safe. You know, there are people that don't wear masks, there are people who, uh, violate social distancing, but that doesn't mean that you have to. So I just encourage all of you to continue to be safe out there. I just want to bring to also to everyone's attention that, you know, the census for twenty twenty, um, has been impacted quite significantly by this, uh, everything surrounding the coronavirus. So I just sort of remind you that, uh, if you're listening, the census is still very important to our city. And we just encourage, uh, all of you, uh, in the county, especially in St. Cloud, please take time to fill out that census. Uh, it's very important to the future of, of our city and you can go to twentytwentycensus.gov and you can, it's just real easy to fill out that application if you haven't done that. It's, uh, very quick, very easy and very important to our city. Um, with that, I don't have anything else. I'd like to bring your attention to the information section, the report section. Our next council meeting will be Thursday, May the fourteenth at six thirty P M. We have several proclamations that have been made, uh, and sent out a proclamation recognition of the National Water Safety Month, a proclamation recognition of Affordable Housing Week, a proclamation in recognition of National Small Business Week, a proclamation recognition of Economic Development Week, and a proclamation was issued in recognition of the National Community Development Week. Does anybody else want to add to the proclamation list? If not, we have no other business on the agenda and we are adjourned. Thank, thank you once again, all of the tech and all of the staff for, uh, going the extra mile and making all of this, uh, work so well and possible tonight. We appreciate you. With that, we are adjourned.